Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, November 16, 2020. Call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. For recognition of members present, please let the record show that all city councilors are present and City Administrator Canrath is present. With that, I'd like to invite everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is behind City Administrator Canrath.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Under General, we have a couple items this week. Small Business Saturday.
So we have two items happening. The Saco Main Street Organization, in cooperation with the City of Saco, is proud to promote Small Business Saturday with their third annual Saco Bucks event. Local businesses sponsor $5 fee coupons to spend at participating downtown Saco merchants and restaurants. Get your Saco Bucks on Saturday, November 28th, outside the Saco Scoop, to shop small and shop local for less until December 9. With the Small Business Saturday recognition, we have the resolution here, and it says Small Business Saturday. Whereas Saco Main celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.9% of all firms with paid employees in the United States, are responsible for 65.1% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas small businesses employ 47.1% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, 62% of U.S. small businesses reported that they need to see consumer spending return to pre-COVID levels by the end of 2020 in order to stay in business. 65% of U.S. small businesses owners said it would be most helpful to their businesses to have their regulars return and start making purchases again. And 3/4 of the U.S. consumers are currently looking for ways to shop small and support their community. And whereas 96% of the consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at small, independently owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact, and 97% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. And whereas 95% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday reported the day makes them want to shop or eat at small, independently owned businesses all year long, not just during the holiday season. And whereas Saco supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas the advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now therefore I, William Doyle, Mayor of Saco Main, do hereby proclaim November 28, 2020, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Sign the 16th of November, 2020, by Mayor of the City of Saco. Again, thank you to all the small businesses that have endured through this tough year, and we hope everyone will go out and shop small and shop local, and just urge everyone to be safe while doing so. Next is on the agenda, Item B, Ward 4 Council Seat Process Clarification. Following the discussion of the Monday, November 9, 2020 City Council meeting about filling an anticipated vacancy on the City Council, a clarification from City Solicitor Murphy and subsequent Maine Municipal Association legal consultation, the City of Saco is now accepting letters of interest from Ward 4 residents who wish to serve on the City Council for the remainder of Councillor Copeland's term expiring December 20, 2022. We anticipate that Councillor Copeland will vacate her seat on December 7 to serve as State Representative for District 14. Again, congratulations, Councillor Copeland, on your success in becoming the State Representative. Interested candidates must submit a letter of interest to Michelle Hughes, City Clerk, at mhughes@socomaine.org, or the City Clerk's office at Saco City Hall by 4:00 PM on Tuesday, December 1. The submissions from interested candidates may be reviewed and discussed publicly during the City Council meeting on December 7. Thank you, everybody. With that, we are up to Item 5 of the agenda. We have committee correspondence to council. Are there any committee correspondents at this time? Councillor McPhail, do you have anything on the update of the Festival of Trees? As I understand, it's going to be an event outside this year, and it's going to be a little different than it normally has been.
Yes, you are correct, Mr. Mayor. We are in the process of the decorating now. It will run through the same time span, but all of the decorations will be outside. It will be drive-through, walk-through, with lights and displays. We are also doing an online auction, which will take the place of the traditional auction that we've had, which we, on the Facebook page, we did just put a sneak preview of a few of the items that are currently up right now. There will be more added. I do not have the exact date in front of me right now to when it will start. Leave it's the, right after Thanksgiving. But if you go to the Dyer Library Saco Museum Facebook page, that website and address is there and available. So we're hoping everybody will participate and stop by. And again, we have a date coming up. Our next meeting, we will finalize all of the dates, but my understanding is that we will have one day with a socially-distanced Santa will be coming to visit, and for the kids to at least be able to see. But again, you know, socially-distanced, but they can get their wish list in early.
Thank you, Councillor McPhail. Is there also something that Saco Main Street is doing this year instead of the Parade of Lights?
Yep, that actually just came out. We are teaming up with Heart of Biddeford to do a drive-through light display down Main Streets. So all of Heart of Biddeford, Biddeford Main Street through Saco Main Street, and again, the details are all, the final details are all coming through slowly. We will be having a small tree lighting. But Saturday, this coming Saturday, we will be out decorating all of the lamp posts, adding new lights to the snowflake decorations, and lining the street with lights. So, and we are still looking for volunteers. If any community resident want to help volunteer to put up the lights, they can reach out to Saco Main Street. We're doing it from 10 to 12 Saturday morning. So again, as details come and more finalized, I will have additional updates.
Thank you for that, Councillor McPhail. Every time I was out this weekend putting up lights at the house, and so I'm happy to help out this coming Saturday if you needed to put up lights on Main Street. But I'm always reminded of that holiday song that comes out with "Ringin' Up the Lights."
And any volunteers are also entitled to a free ice cream or a cup of hot cocoa as well, so.
Perfect. Well, thank you. Thank you for that. Councillor Copeland, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to, all right, I am on. I just wanted to say about the Saco Bike and Pedestrian Committee, and we had a bike ride on Saturday, and it was from the community center over and through the Eastern Trail to Hannafords where groceries were purchased, and those are going to go to the food shelter, the food bank, I mean. But I wanted to tell you how many pounds of food they got, and it is 46.6 pounds of food by just the six of us. It was a really great ride. It was a beautiful day. We had a toddler and a young gentleman in the sixth grade from Saco Middle School was there, his mom, and it was a really good day. And I'm very proud of the Saco Bike and Ped Committee for caring so much about our community. If you see around town, there are some signs that they worked with the MDOT to get about being careful around bicycles and giving them their three-foot space, and they're doing really good work. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Councillor Copeland. Any other committee correspondence to council? Seeing no further committee correspondence. Moving on to Item 6, Public Comments. City Administrator Canrath, have we received any public comment for tonight's meeting?
None at this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open it up to anybody that is participating. If you would like to speak to the City Council, please use the raise-hand feature of the Zoom platform, and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council, or press *9 if you're using a cellular phone. Again, if anyone would like to speak to the council, please use the raise-hand feature of the Zoom platform, and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. We ask that you state your name, your address, for the record. And first, we're going to hear from David Plavon. David, you've been allowed to speak, so please go ahead and unmute, and again, state your name and address for the record, and provide your comments to the City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm David Plavon, Two Surf Street. I'm speaking on behalf of the voters of Ward 4, and I'm urging that the council look to revise the charter to allow the vacancy created by Councillor Copeland's pending resignation be filled only temporarily by appointment and not for two years. I'm under the impression the charter was written on the premise that council terms are two years, and when the decision was made to expand those terms, the rules for replacing a councillor who vacates that position prior to the end of the term should have been revised. Excuse me. As it stands now, Councillor Copeland will not even have served the first of three years we elected her to serve. While there's no reason to trust that the mayor or the council will act in the best interest of Ward 4, it's the electorate that should be filling the term, not the, not local government. So before the council acts on naming a replacement, it should strongly consider its action. This choice belongs in the hands of the voters, not in the hands of local government. Thank you.
Thank you, David. If there's any other public comment? Seeing no hands raised and nobody seeking recognition, moving on to Item 7, Approval of the Minutes from October 19th, October 26th, and November 2nd. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
No move.
Motion's been made by Councillor Mintorn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Copeland. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote on the minutes. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes 6-1 to approve the minutes. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, the consent items. We have four consent items. We have Item A, Certification of Election Results for the November 3, 2020 elections. We have Item B, a Confirmation of Appointment of Carrie Peiser and Laura Branstadter to the Arts Commission, Confirmation of Appointment to the Registration Appeals Board of Judith Tripp, and the Reappointment of Edward Jeanette and Emily Cole Prescott to Saco River Corridor Commission. At this moment in time, is there any council objection to Councillor Mintorn voting on Item D? Whereas there is a relation by marriage to one of the appointments in Item D, is there any objection to Councillor Mintorn voting? Seeing no objection, I'll allow Councillor Mintorn to decide if he would like to abstain when the vote gets to him or not, but at this point, there's no objection. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items as proposed?
So moved.
Councillor Gunn, is there a second?
Second.
Councillor McPhail? Any discussion on the consent agenda items? A roll call vote? Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
And Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes 7-0. Thank you very much, everyone. With that, we are at Action Items, Item 9 of the agenda, and that is Item A. We have up first a public hearing, renewal application for a special entertainment permit, Celestial Sausage LLC doing business as Rochetta's Saco. Councillor Gunn?
Can you hear me okay? You went out for a second.
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you much. Celestial Sausage LLC doing business as Rochetta's Saco has applied for a renewal of their special entertainment permit. Permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment 93-2. Staff recommends approval, and I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councillor Gunn to open the public hearing, second by Councillor Mintorn. Any discussion? A roll call vote to open the public hearing. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes, but just a slight point. You usually ask the city administrator if anybody has submitted anything.
I have nothing to report.
Councillor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
And Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to open the public hearing passes 7-0 at 6:48. At this time, with the public hearing open, City Administrator Canrath, have we received any public comment on this item?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. If there's anybody from the public that would like to speak on the renewal application, please use the raise-hand feature of the Zoom platform, or *9 if you're calling in on a cellular phone, and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. Seeing no hands raised and nobody seeking recognition, Councillor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the City Council grant the renewal application submitted by the Celestial Sausage LLC doing business as Rochetta Saco for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's current liquor license. I move to approve of the order.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councillor Gunn, second by Councillor Mintorn. Any discussion? A roll call vote. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 at 6:50 PM. Next item is Item B, One Reading, Council Approval for an Abatement for Dangar Construction. Councillor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dangar Construction was incorrectly assessed twice for land that is part of the Settlers Landing 2 subdivision. This error occurred in the tax year of 2019. An abatement should be issued in the amount of $2,842.08 for this error. However, by statute, the City Council needs to approve the abatement going back more than one year from the current commitment date. Be it ordered that the City Council authorizes the assessor to abate $2,842.08 for the 2019 tax bill for map and lot 033-002-000-000 located on Smith Lane owned by Dangar Construction. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councillor McPhail, second by Councillor Mintorn. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, a roll call vote. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
And Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much, everyone. We are now at Item 10, which is New Business. We have Item A, an Infrastructure Review. I believe we're going to have City Planner Bob Hamlin and City Engineer Joe LaVerrier join us for this Infrastructure Review memorandum. Good evening, City Planner Hamlin. Thank you for joining us. And good evening, Public Works Director Fox. Thank you for joining us.
Evening.
Is Joe going to be joining us?
No, I'll be representing Public Works.
Thank you. Who would like to lead off on this presentation?
I'd be glad to say a few words. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I understand it, because this effort got underway early in the year 2020, Public Works and the Planning Departments agreed that bringing forward information on pending additions to city infrastructure made sense. This is really just under the heading of letting our elected officials and decision-makers know what's coming down the pipeline in terms of subdivisions that are currently under review or under development. So Joe LaVerrier, the City Engineer, former City Planner, Emily Cole Prescott, combined efforts to pull together the information that has been submitted to you for review. And as you'll see, a fair number of residential subdivisions are underway. Fair number of these, I pointed Copper Leaf down at the bottom of Page 1. Counselors will remember just last meeting that they decided to accept Country Club Drive, the street that provides access to most of that subdivision. Others, such as Fog Estates, they're well underway, but I don't believe any house lots are under construction at this point. Innis Landing, same thing. They are at the stage where infrastructure is going in the ground. I believe a base coat of pavement went down before the weather turned too cold, so they'll be well positioned for work over the winter and next year. Lombard Estates is closing in on requesting street acceptance. I'm not sure that's going to happen this fall. If not, likely they will be ready in the spring, and so on and so forth. So really just wanted to let you folks know that we have a number of projects that are at various stages of completion. Inasmuch as there are residential subdivisions, there are residential streets that are likewise in the pipeline for eventual presentation to the city for acceptance and consideration by the council. by the council for acceptance. I don't want to speak for Pat in his department, but I know it's a continuous cause for contemplation, if not concern, in terms of year after year, more, more streets being accepted, which merit essentially maintenance in perpetuity. And the last time I checked in with the Public Works Department, it's been a few years now, but the cost of maintaining about a mile of city street, on average, about $15,000 at that time. Pat may have more current information. But snapshot in time, here we are in late 2020, and we've got a, a number of subdivision streets that will be up for acceptance over the next few years.
Thank you, city planner Hamlin, Public Works Director Fox.
Yep, Bob, Bob summed it up pretty well. I think this started and just got sort of shelved when the live meetings stopped, so we're revisiting it. But it came about because sometimes we'll discuss whether we should accept more city streets when one comes up for acceptance, but I think it's important to see all of the ongoing projects to know that these developers have entered the process with an expectation and a set of rules to go by and ordinances to follow. So these ten are kind of, they're already well underway. They're, they would expect to finish the process in the next probably year or two and expect city acceptance. So I guess to, if we want to make any changes to city streets, or I think one of the big ones for consideration and discussion is, right now, if you want to create a subdivision, which is, you'll see, some of them are only five lots and maybe 450 to 500 feet of roadway, that can only be done on a city street, which then means that that has to meet city street standards. It has to have a sidewalk, it has to have other considerations, 50-foot right-of-way, lots of public easements for drainage and sewer. Perhaps it's worth at least a discussion to see, do we want to allow some flexibility to allow some of those small dead ends to stay private? Some of them aren't much different, really, housing-wise than a condo development that has a private drive. So perhaps that is something worth considering in the future. Otherwise, we are essentially setting up every group of five homes to be a public street that comes to us. These are being put in places in our city that are harder for our large plow trucks to get to, so we may have a rural route with a large truck, but it can't navigate a small 500-foot side street easily, and its time is better spent on the commuting roads and keeping the higher traffic volume roads safer. So some discussions, I think, to have and understand that anything we fix now really isn't going to come to fruition or benefit us for at least a couple of years, but we should arrive at some of these decision points. Another thing would be to, we'll probably bring before you, if nothing else, this winter, some changes to dates so that we are not scrambling and accepting roadways as we head into the winter months. Makes it pretty hard for me to come to you and tell you what we may need for resources in the next winter or two if we don't know how many streets we're going to be taking on. It would be nice to know that earlier on, so perhaps some dates that if you don't, if you don't put your road up for acceptance by September, then you own it until the end of the winter, essentially. You could put it back up for acceptance in April, perhaps. Just mostly to get you updated on what projects are kind of already well underway and see if we want to make any changes in the future.
Thank you, Director Fox. Any questions? Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Pat, did I hear you correct with this list of, did we say 10 subdivisions or projects that eventually we will be looking to accept all these? Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah. These are all, these are proposed as future city streets and are all being built that way with the anticipation that, assuming they meet all of today's standards, they would be city streets at the end. It has to go before you for acceptance, but they will have played by all the rules at that point.
So there's an expectation that these will all come to us to become eventually property forever to the city of Saco?
Yeah.
And with us having this discussion today, we're kind of, because there has been, and I've heard from the past council, this council, I've heard, not as a whole, but from individuals, that we want to be more careful of look, of what streets to accept. Is that correct?
I, I think that's been a very general comment. I think we just need to hone in on what does that mean, because without it written down, that would be hard to retroactively put on a developer and stand behind as a municipality. So I, I think we need to put context to that and get it into our ordinances.
Okay. So again, there's no official action right now, but I just want what I'm about to say to become part of the minutes so that there's at least a record. I would like for developers to understand that we are looking to not through this process in the future, not for what's currently presented to me now, but I'm talking about future projects, that I'm kind of timestamping it today as the city's really going to have some discussions, or at least what I'm hearing, and is that we're looking to not accept all, all properties just carte blanche, or that we're looking to change the status quo. So I just kind of want that, it's kind of like, maybe now we can create the start date now so that future developers are now aware that this is no longer going to be the status quo necessarily. Now, the council may decide to allow it, but I just wanted, at least now there's a start date saying there are discussions, so that I don't want future developers thinking that they're automatically going to be accepted. And I do want to make it known that I'm not talking about the documents and the properties that I see now, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Archer. Counselor Minthorne?
Thank you, Mayor. Pat and Bob both, if I understood everything correctly, it sounds to me like what we should be doing is, as we move forward with the, the comprehensive plan revision in its global size, we should be looking at creating a number of ordinance changes or amendments that would facilitate the changes you spoke of tonight, in that as we get into the final votes on the comprehensive plan, maybe 18 months out, that we have those items in place to, if you will, draw the line in the sand, pass the end of, of these current submissions that will, no doubt, become city roads, but acting forward, we can go ahead and, and limit how we choose, or at least maybe adjust how the construction is done to facilitate either better access for the plows or to just not accept them as city streets and have the homeowners' associations or whatever mandated to be created to facilitate it being done privately.
And, you know, we may, in fact, find that developers prefer this. A, a small subdivision, perhaps five to 10 lots, a roadway that's 600 or 700 feet in length, is going to be more, it's going to be cheaper to build that road if it's a private road than it, it's going to be a city street. In fact, by offering developers that option, we may find that they, they're pleased with the, the ability to make a choice rather than to be restricted to building over only a city street. So I think if properly regulated, private roads have pretty much proven themselves since 2001. They're scattered all around the city, they're limited to four lots currently, they're only allowed in a non, non-subdivision situation. I think we can probably put them to better use than we have to date. And your point is well taken, Counselor. Comprehensive plan will absolutely take a look at this issue, work with various city departments, and we will come up with some recommendations.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you, city planner Hamlin. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I mean, I think most of you and prior councils have heard me express my concern with this issue for several years. I mean, as you look at the list, you're talking about a significant amount of road and infrastructure that the city would ultimately be taking on, which really amounts to several of these I consider private roads as is. I mean, most of you and myself, you know, probably would be hard pressed to even identify where Apple Tree subdivision is located. So it's highly unlikely we'll ever drive on it as a public road. What I would say, as I said last, last week, is that we did look at this a little bit during the zoning ordinance revision process, and while, I, I suppose you could wait for the comp plan, I don't think it's really necessary, as, as stated, you know, we have kind of looked at this, and I think it's something you could actually move forward relatively quickly, given that Director Fox has also been looking at this for several years, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Counselor Copeland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only concern would be fire trucks and things like that. We need the road to be enough that the fire truck has this little turnaround thing and that's, you know, up to their standard, so I, I'd like to have their stamp of approval on going in this direction. Otherwise, it sounds reasonable to me.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Director Fox?
Thank you. Those are all great comments, and I, I do think perhaps it is isolated enough to present some of the options for certainly like the smaller five lot, 500 feet, to be private road versus public, and keep that as a standalone activity from the comp plan so that the planning board that you had a joint meeting with that talked about sometimes feeling like they're stuck in a reactionary place and not, you know, not necessarily just going by the ordinances that are in place today. So I think some of this stuff could be done earlier than the comp plan without affecting any comprehensive vision of any area of the community. So some of it could move sooner rather than later. There's no one-size-fits-all. We have roads where we tell people they have to connect to another street, and they end up building 500 feet of road that has no frontage on it because of wetlands, or they can't control the connectivity to another parcel because they don't own it. So there will never be one answer for this, but I think just having more tools in the toolbox to point developers towards certain things that benefit everyone would help as a first step, and then some of the larger things could be part of the comp.
Director Fox, city planner Hamlin, on page 23 of the packet underneath the Park North box of different phased, says, "Planning and development of Public Works have also been in the process of revising Chapter 186 standards and policies, which will be soon sent to the city council for its consideration." Do we know when that will be coming before us for consideration?
That was actually a leftover comment from back in January when we started this process, but I would say, based on, it was partly based on how this conversation went today and whether we felt like there was some, some interest at the council level for us to bring this up this winter. What we would be updating first is, we could do a few different things. One of them would be just getting some dates in there so that we're not accepting roads during the winter plowing season. I think if, if there's, there seems to be general, I would say at least that's worth bringing before you, so that would be one of them. The other one would be whether to target some of the, include in that one revision some of the private road, subdivisions allowed on private roads. That's a little bit more involved than just adding a few dates to the ordinance. But if we could get some general direction, and certainly not a voting type item, but any direction on whether you'd like to see those coupled to come to council as one discussion rather than go through a three-meeting process twice.
Director Fox, I think there's some consensus among the counselors and here to bring something to the city council for review sooner rather than later to help deal with some of these situations that are coming forth.
Okay. I think our first draft before you will target dates for acceptance of even some of the projects that are going right now, and then moving forward, private, private roads and subdivisions on them. Bring those as one package to, for discussion purposes.
Thank you very much. Any further questions for either Director Fox or city planner Hamlin? Gentlemen, thank you very much for joining us and all your hard work. Take care, have a great evening.
You too. Thank you.
Up next, we have item B, which is the first quarter budget update. For that, I think we'll be hearing from Finance Director Salas. Greetings and welcome, Finance Director Salas. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to, as per I usually do, sort of just run through the information that was formally written up in the packet. The first thing that you may notice in this quarter's update is that there's a new column. It's the fiscal year 2021 year-to-date forecast. So this is a column that existed sort of in the background with previous updates, but I pulled it forward so that council just has a better idea of how the budget is being calculated, especially our performance in terms of being ahead or behind. This forecast is basically, is based on how much of each individual budgeted line item we anticipate to have been expended year-to-date. By default, accounts are allocated equally across the 12 periods of the fiscal year, but then that number is tweaked and adjusted based on seasonality or predictable timing of payments. For example, the county tax is 100% paid in August, and that's where we forecasted that budget to be expended. This exercise enables us to have a tighter understanding of whether we actually are tracking ahead or behind versus our full-year budget. In Q1, the city enjoyed a net operating income of $9.63 million. This was largely due to the timing of the first half taxes, which were collected in September. All-in expenses were tracking 3% behind at the end of the quarter, while revenues were tracking 5% ahead. Quick analysis on the expenses side, I tried to focus primarily on accounts, or rather on departmental budgets, that were either more than 5% ahead or more than 20% behind, so the departments that kind of were popping out as question marks about what might be going on. The assessor is 55% behind forecast, and this is related to payment on the net cost of the shared city assessor's position, as well as the budget for roughly half of the revaluation was budgeted in fiscal year 2021, but those funds are unlikely to be expended, certainly before the fourth quarter of fiscal year 2021, if they're going to be expended at all in this year. Capital projects is tracking 16% ahead of forecast. The vendor that was responsible for the purchase of the fire truck required a purchase order in the full amount of the cost. However, the city leased, did a capital lease for this vehicle, so we only budgeted basically the first year's down payment. So for now, we're sort of carrying this 655,000 P.O., makes us look a little overspent, but that P.O. will be liquidated without actual expenditures at year's end, so this budget will come back in line. Foot enforcement is tracking 35% ahead of forecast. There was a retirement payout, which is putting some pressure on this departmental budget. Retirement payouts are typically not budgeted. A small amount of payroll contingency was approved by council to support a department in this sort of financial situation, but it was much smaller than the actual distribution and really wouldn't make much of a difference in this department. Communications and information technology really just grouped together because they're behind for the same reason. Licenses and fees are typically budgeted as an upfront cost as part of the forecast, but they may be expended slowly throughout the year, so that's why they're tracking a little bit behind. These departments aren't actually really behind in their budget. Contingency is 81% behind budget. Misleading expenses have not yet started to hit the contingency account because, of course, we're expending mostly out of the approved budget line items. Tax abatements were not posted until October, so another piece of that. The council is 49% behind forecast. Pay for the first quarter of fiscal year 2021 was accrued against fiscal year 2020, so this will actually come back in line at the end of fiscal year 2021 when we accrue out of the first quarterly pay of fiscal year 2022. So that's a So that's a bit of a timing issue and we'll adjust the forecast for council pay for next year to reflect that. Federal assistance, there's an unplanned expense of $24,879 under federal assistance. These are expenses that are going to be offset by the Keep Main Healthy Grant, which the city of Saco was awarded thanks to the hard efforts of Jessa Verna and Anne Morrisier, our internal auditor. Fringe benefits, 69% behind forecast. We just have a few Q1 bills that were paid in October rather than September, so that's why that's tracking a bit behind. Human resources, 24% behind forecast. We've just got several initiatives that are sort of on hold until we can fill that HR director slot, just out of respect for the initiatives that director may want to spearhead. Parks and Recreation is 28% behind forecast. Obviously, the global pandemic continues to put pressure and limit the programming that our recreation department can offer. However, recreation expenses are largely offset, almost 100%, by recreational revenues. So we're behind budget in terms of our expenditures, but we're also behind budget in terms of our revenues and those two pretty much offset each other. The Public Works Department looks like it's 6% ahead of forecast. This is another situation where we have some encumbrances that are double booked. Those were cleared in October, so the Public Works Department is not actually tracking to be overspent. And finally, the solicitor is 36% ahead of forecast. The city has just been working through a number of legal matters, which is putting pressure on this line. Before I move on to revenues, are there any questions about the expense side?
Councilor Copeland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question about the code enforcement retirement payout. So where do normal retirement payouts come from, for anybody?
Normally, they come out of the line in which the employee was paid for their normal pay and normally they do put pressure on departmental budgets, but in the past, maybe offset by an open position, it varies from year to year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Copeland. Finance Director Salas, can you, just the assessor? I understand, is it typical that we don't receive an invoice for the net cost of the shared assessors position at this time?
Yes, because the first quarter pay has to be calculated. So that would be July, August, and September. And then it's a net pay versus the listing agent that's employed by the city of Saco but also shared with Bedford. So we have to get all those numbers together and then, and then calculate what the net invoice is and that's usually paid in October.
Thank you. Any other questions for Finance Director Salas on the expense analysis? Finance Director Salas, I think you can move on to revenue analysis.
Thank you. So revenues in the first quarter are tracking 5% ahead of target, but many of the revenues are either far ahead or far behind forecast. Revenue's a little bit harder to predict because it can be a little bit more variable, especially depending on the revenue line item. So for example, we collected a tree growth penalty in the assessing department. Those are hard to plan. Some years we get nothing, some years we might get 30,000 like this year. So we don't typically budget for that. There's a little bit of a mismatch. There was some revenue that was transferred under capital projects, so capital projects transfer. This is related to the unspent portion of the River Dredge project, which was transferred out of the capital projects fund as a, basically an abandoned project and returned to the general fund in an effort to help us close the budget gap that we were working on for fiscal year 2021. The transfer revenue was originally budgeted under transfers from special revenue funds. However, transfers must tie by fund type and so we had to actually book the transfer in transfer from capital projects rather than transfer from special revenue funds where it was originally budgeted. If council is interested, because it is a significant amount of funds, we could do a budget amendment just to clean up that item or it would just remain a footnote for the fiscal year. Rental income is behind forecast because Q1 rental income was booked in era of fiscal year 2020. I've worked with the accounts receivable department to clarify our process and that will not be an issue going forward. Interest earnings, this is a tough one. Interest earnings was a bit of a pot of gold for us the last couple of years. We had really strong performance on our repurchase agreement with Bank or Savings Bank. However, since the economic crisis associated with the global pandemic, interest earnings on repo accounts are down 90% and we're seeing that on a monthly basis. And so interest earnings for the city of Saco are down 90% versus forecast. We are planning to look at an investment strategy, planning to look at the investment policies that are in place, but we have other items that are simply more pressing right now and I would say it's unlikely that our interest revenue numbers are going to recover before the end of fiscal year 2021. Parks and Recreation and the Police Department both have weak revenues, but they are offset by savings on the expense side. I already talked about the recreation piece. In the Police Department, they are not currently participating in or staffing for the MDA program, that's the main drug enforcement grant program. So we don't have the cost of an MDA officer on the expense side, but we're not receiving that grant revenue on the revenue side. And finally, Planning and Economic Development, revenues are down 33%. I've reached out to Director Clavett and she's looking into understanding if there's been a slowdown in some development activity or if there might be an issue simply with transferring billing and escrow activity from Planning and Economic Development to finance. So we're looking into that. Are there any questions on the revenue piece of the presentation?
Thank you, Finance Director Salas. Any questions? Councilor Copeland?
Question about the unspent portion of the River Dredge project. So there's still some dredging to be done down around there. Are we unallocating that or why, why do we need to move this right now?
So this was an item that was approved by council as part of the budget process. My understanding was in communicating with Director Fox that this project was closed and that the fund balance was available either to reappropriate to another capital project or to transfer back to the general fund. And council had approved that to be a transfer back to the general fund to close the budget loop, the, or the budget hole in 2021.
All right, I just, I'm just wondering when, when those guys go to finish that up down there, they're gonna, supposedly gonna go around the pylons and clean that up. I just don't know where the money's gonna come from then if it's taken out here, but I guess that'll have to be a budget amendment if they want it back. I don't know.
Thank you, Councilor Copeland. Director Fox, can you speak to the plans moving forward?
Yes, the reason this was returned to the general fund and discussed at budget time was actually this was only, this was put in the capital plan to clean up the debris in the river ahead of the Army Corps dredging. This was not the dredging we were going to do around the pier through the ship grant process. This was, it was called dredging, but it wasn't for dredging. It was actually for the river cleanup that we didn't have to do in the lower half of the river.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Fox. Any further questions for Finance Director Salas or Director Fox? Director Fox, thank you again and Finance Director Salas, thank you for your presentation. Do you have anything further?
I do not, although I believe I'm part of the next item that's on the agenda.
Any last questions about the first quarter budget update? Okay. Finance Director Salas, thank you for the budget update and I believe you are the resource for amendments to Chapter 211 that has been put into the packet in changing some of the fee schedules and so forth. So can you take us through the proposed changes?
Certainly. So something, and I have to credit the Police Department for identifying this, something that was identified early, earlier this year as part of the city's migration to an online parking, ticketing, and permitting software, was that the fines associated with parking violations was actually written into ordinance. The city actually had competing fines listed in both the fee schedule and in Chapter 211. It's a best practice not to write exact fee numbers into city ordinance because it can be difficult over time to revise those as sort of inflation may change what a fair rate is. Initially, when this ordinance was written, the city also said that fines would double if not paid within five days, which is a bit punitive as compared to what most municipalities charge as late fees. Speaking from experience in a previous city where I lived, it was a $5 late fee if not paid within 30 days. So doubling within five days is a bit extreme. And again, it's, it's hard to change ordinance, so we wanted to move late fees into the fee schedule as well. So that was one significant change. And then another change was Chapter 211 included a couple city lots, but, but not all of the city lots that the city actually owned, which could be a bit confusing. It seemed like a good opportunity to make sure that there was a comprehensive list of all the city unlocks. So that was an addition that was made near the end of this ordinance revision. And then finally, the idea was to update the language a little bit so that it aligned with the fee schedule that was approved by council, where we were going to move to hourly pay parking for non-residents at the train station short-term lot, as well as updating the annual permit and expanding the number of parking lots at which the resident parking permit would be accepted. So a couple of different items in this ordinance that I think are just going to make things a little bit easier to manage going forward. I did review this ordinance with both the Police Department and Public Works, as well as all senior staff and our city attorney for feedback before bringing it to council.
Thank you, Finance Director Salas. Any questions for the Finance Director on, on her presentation here? Just so the city council is aware, I am going to, I've asked Councilor Mintorn to put in amendment at the, when this comes before you, to add two members of the public to the Traffic Safety Committee under Section 21160, to do, to bring in more, more community members into the Traffic Safety Committee. And Councilor Mintorn, I believe, has put that forward to City Administrator Canrath to go through the process of putting into an amendment when this comes before the city council. With that, Councilor Copeland, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at our package, page 64. It's page four of 17 for the fee schedule, Chapter 211 updates. And there are two things on there that I have a question about. One is about the residential parking permits, age 62 and older and the veterans. So I see that it's, free is crossed out. It says it expires on December 31st. Can I have an explanation of that, please?
Certainly. So if you scroll down, basically what we did is rather than having these residential parking permits apply only to Bayview and Camp Ellis, we moved them down to also apply to the train station and put them under the Chapter 211 section. So if you go down to page 68, you will see that there's a resident parking permit, age 62 plus or veteran of any age, which has no fee. It's about the middle of page 68.
68, and let me find it. 62 or veteran of any age, okay. No fee. Terrific. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Councilor Copeland. Councilor Mintorn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to read what I had submitted to the city administrator and yourself with regard to the edits you had requested on 21160 on page 52, I believe it is, in the packet. There is hereby created a Traffic Safety Committee to consist of two members of city council, inserting two city residents, police chief, fire chief, then editing street superintendent to the director of public works, traffic safety officer, and city administrator. So I've already submitted that, so.
Thank you, Councilor Mintorn. Any further questions for Finance Director Salas on amendments to Chapter 211? Councilor Copeland?
I just want to say thank you for doing this important work and getting this all organized. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilor Copeland. Seeing no other hands raised and nobody, no other questions. Finance Director Salas, thank you for joining us and thank you for the work on this issue.
Absolutely. Thank you.
With that, we are at Item 11 of the agenda. City Administrator Canrath, do you have an administrative update for us?
I do indeed, yes. Thank you. Starting off with our, once again, very successful senior meals program. Last Wednesday for Veterans Day, we did 225 meals. It was sponsored by Saco Valley Credit Union and served by the Golden Rooster. We had a number of great volunteers return to help out with the program. Donations were also included from the Saco Food Pantry, so thank you to them as well. This week's meal will be Thanksgiving style and will once again be provided by the Golden Rooster with donations from the Saco Food Pantry again and Saco Parks and Rec did purchase the pies that will be served. This is already sold out at 250 participants, which is outstanding. And it will be once again on November 19th from 11:00 to 12:30. And our sponsor is Saco and Bedford Savings. So again, thank you to all those involved in making this program like it was earlier this year, a significant success. Some other things offered for seniors on Wednesday, November 18th, Age Friendly Saco Volunteers and Thornton Academy staff will kick off their annual sand buckets for seniors program at 11:00 AM at the new Saco Public Works facility at 15 Phillips Spring Road. Volunteers will fill dozens of five-gallon buckets with the salt-sand mixture available for pickup or delivery will also be an option for homebound residents older than 65. To sign up, please call Age Friendly Saco at 207-710-5029 and ask to reserve the sand bucket. If no one does answer, please leave a message to indicate where, if you can pick it up or if you would like it delivered. You can also request a bucket online at sacomaine.org/agefriendly using the form on that page. And just also a reminder that Saco Public Works has sand available for pickup at their facility for residents of Saco, not contractors, but residents who can take up to two five-gallon pails at a time and must provide their own containers this winter. One more plug for Age Friendly Saco, we do have the Farmers to Families Food Distribution that will be happening at Saco Middle School on November 18th from 9:00 AM until the boxes are gone. All are eligible for this drive-through first-come, first-served pickup boxes. Will each have five pounds of protein, five pounds of dairy, 12 pounds of produce, and a gallon of milk. So please share this with anyone who may be experiencing food insecurity during these difficult times. Just a quick update on some property transfers. The closing for our former Public Works facility at 351 North Street will be taking place and completed this week. Our sale of 90 Temple Street to Bedford Housing is also on track, but they may want to be approaching the council about a pilot proposal, that's payment and a little tax as proposal. So that may be coming before us in the coming weeks, but we'll have more information on that soon. And lastly, just an update, my next city administrator's open office hours event will be December 1st from 3:00 to 5:00 PM in the City Hall Auditorium. Of course, all Saco residents and local business owners are welcome and encouraged to attend to come and ask their questions or express any concerns they may have. Happy to take any questions. That's all I have. Thank you. Happy to take any questions. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Canrath. Any questions for the city administrator? Okay, seeing no questions, thank you. Moving on to item 12 of the council agenda, council discussion and comment. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I just like take a quick moment to speak on the Ward 4 vacancy. Last meeting, we took no formal action on this item. And currently, there's no vacancy that exists. Yet, judging by what I heard earlier, it would appear as though we were moving forward without further council discussion. So I mean, that's a big concern to me. I appreciate the second legal opinion that we received, but I never questioned the first legal opinion. The question, again, was the charter language seems clear enough. It's, the problem is that the language is based off a two-year term. You know, when we moved to staggered three-year terms, this language obviously didn't get adjusted. So here we are with a term that has two years left. Under this premise, if I were to resign tomorrow, you would be filling a three-year term. Again, I understand the language. I'm saying that I don't feel as though it's right. And, you know, you can say we were trying to rewrite the charter, as I've heard others state, and that's simply not true. I read the charter, and it says, "In the case of a vacancy created in the city council less than 12 months prior to the next regular municipal election, the remaining members of the city council may appoint an eligible person." It doesn't tell you that we have to appoint. In fact, I would say there's enough leeway there that a council could go, take it upon itself to hold an election vote. We can go out, say, next meeting, and have this as an item on the agenda where we decide, should we hold an election or should we appoint? I think you've heard from at least one member of Ward 4 from the public that spoke tonight. I know there are several others that feel the same way. So again, I just, I don't feel right, really, moving forward with us selecting it. I've gone through this process. It was an extremely convoluted process the last time I went through it, where we were left with what I could only describe as, I don't know, middle school or high school gym class, where you're selecting somebody that comes up and we're supposed to determine who's a qualified person to fill that role. I believe that should be up to, you know, the residents of Ward 4. So with that said, I would respectfully request, per our council procedures manual, that an item pertaining to the filling of Ward 4's vacancy by a special election be placed on the next upcoming election or on the upcoming agenda for action, excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. Councilor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too wanted to discuss this vacancy. I didn't even consider, which is interesting because I'm usually good at seeing this, Councilor Johnston's above the May. That's a unique and interesting point that he just put out. But my mind was, again, I understand that when you look at laws, there's also interpretation of the law and what was the intent of the law slash ordinance. And I don't believe that it would be to fulfill a term that is longer than a few years. The way that I had it, the way I understood it, until, again, I know we changed, was that it was to take place until the next regular election. Now, I want to focus on what regular election means because when you start looking at interpretation, what does the term "regular election" mean? We, a regular election, if you're looking at a dictionary, which I did earlier, was a pre-planned election that is already in effect and that it's staggered and it has certain definitions. We were not intending on electing Ward 4 this next year, so that by definition makes it irregular. So that's why I don't believe that this interpretation is correct because we were only supposed to be looking at one, my ward, and I believe Ward 3. I'm drawing a blank on the other ward that was supposed to come up. So the mere fact that we're voting in a different seat is, makes it irregular. It's not part of that regularity of the intention of the law. So that's why I think, again, I appreciate the two different legal opinions, the one our in-house and then this external through the NMA, which is great that they're a resource to us. But again, when we're looking at the wording, it also says next regular election. And having an election for a ward seat that's not due, scheduled, is irregular in nature. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Archer. Councilor Copeland?
Well, I strongly feel, and you've heard this through the years, that it's important for everything to go through the citizens. And certainly, an elected position should be elected. And I think that's the intent. However, our charter in its plain face states otherwise. So I would say that perhaps the last administration should have dealt with that better. But having it before us now, I think the change needs to be made in the charter. I don't see how we can do anything other than what the charter says. We can't talk about its intent. I would love to because I don't think that's the intent. But, so what I would say is that there should be plenty of time. The information from the applicants should go to everybody. I think that they should have plenty of time to make their case, to give council the, you know, their resume and all their, you know, goals and so forth. And I think that the public, certainly in Ward 4, should have a lot to say. And I think that what they say should be listened to carefully. I know that when I went around campaigning, it was important to a lot of people that I was a woman. The city council, when I first went on, was seven white men. And it was very important to many people, when I knocked on their doors, that a woman be on the council. The council should reflect the community, all of the community. And it's not a good old boys' club. And I think that we all, and I'm not talking to you guys so much that way because you have been very welcoming to me and all that. So I'm not casting that. But the fact remains that there are seven seats. And if my seat is filled with a man, there's still only one woman on this body. So I think that when you, when there's deliberation on who's going to be in this seat, I think hearing the voice of my community, being a woman, was important. Caring about children was important, and the environment was important. And so was lowering taxes. So though, if I, those are the four top issues. So if we can find someone that has the, would like to step up and tell us their story, let's hear it. Let's give them full vetting. Let's give the public full vetting. Maybe put them out in the newspapers. I don't know what to do, but the community has to be involved with this. Has to be, has to be. I'm happy to talk to anybody in Ward 4. My contact information is on the city website. Feel free to reach out. Thanks so much. And I think when you have the deadline, I think, Mr. Mayor, what is the deadline for the letters of intent?
Interested candidates must submit a letter of interest to Michelle Hughes, the city clerk, at mhughes@sacomaine.org or the city clerk's office at Saco City Hall by 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday, December 1st. Tuesday, December 1st.
Okay, so it's a week from this Tuesday then. So get cracking, people. We want to hear from you.
Thank you, Councilor Copeland. Any further discussion and comment? Okay, moving on, there is no executive session tonight. So that brings us to item 15, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Councilor Copeland, second by Councilor Minthorne. Any discussion? Roll call, vote on the adjournment? Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minthorne?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to adjourn at 7:45 p.m. Everyone, thank you for a wonderful evening. Have a great night, be safe, stay well. And please, while we're out in the public, wear a mask and protect you and others in the community so that we're all still here when we can get back to getting together for events. So again, stay safe and be well. Thank you very much.